All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. First item is call to order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and maths are optional for all attendees per City of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco Webex events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Item number two is call to the audience. The City Council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I've got a couple of cards here that I will read in the order received. The first card is from Peter South. Is Peter South here?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Please come forward, state your, are you going to speak, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Okay.
Sorry, I apologize. I know it's first time.
I know, I mean, first up.
You are. There's only two, actually, so.
Great. Do I sit, or what?
Whatever you like. You could point the microphone up if you like to stand, or?
Thank you, sorry.
There you go.
I don't know what to do.
That's okay, you got it.
All right, thank you, guys, so much. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and supporting staff. My name is Peter South, and I'm here as the owner of Itrip Vacations, as well as a board member for Arizonans for Responsible Tourism. And our group consists of residents and business owners and tourism industry leaders who want to protect responsible short-term rentals in Arizona. By helping shape fair regulations, the organization better protects the right to rent for homeowners and rental managers, as well as ensuring the safety and peace of our communities. Many cities have already been crafting and adopting new ordinances regarding short-term rentals in response to the newly passed Senate Bill 1168. And we at AZRT were in full support of 1168 and are here to insist, assist the cities to draft responsible regulations in line with SB 1168. We are uniquely situated to be an asset for both cities and owners, as we have access to thousands of members across the state. We already have a robust library of tools that short-term rental operators can utilize, ranging from how to apply for tax license, noise monitoring, insurance providers, best practices for vetting guests, just to name a few. And we want to partner with the City of Tempe to give you full access to our resources that'll help you ensure compliance for short-term rental operators. We are fully committed to ensuring that our properties are some of the best cared for in this city, and that our guests practice a good neighbor policy. We've begun making available this good neighbor flyer for our properties to educate our guests on how we expect them to act when staying in Tempe neighborhoods. We are running businesses, and we want clean houses, we don't want garbage, and we want friendly guests, because that's good for our business, but also good for our city. As business owners, we expect that we'll be offered a voice to address concerns of angry and frustrated neighbors who simply don't like short-term rentals. So, we ask that, as you increase our responsibility as business owners, you share in that responsibility with us to protect our rights to provide much-needed and desired services for our community. My family has lived in Tempe for over 80 years, and my grandparents' house used to be on what became the Law Library at ASU. So I'm committed personally to this community, but also as board member of AZRT, to continue to make Tempe a sought-after destination for all types of travelers from all over the world. I encourage council members to attend our virtual discussion event November 3rd with other member cities across the state. I'll make these available to the council, and I look forward to working with you, and I worked with Tom a little bit. And so, just want to support you as a council as you look into short-term rentals in this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. South, really appreciate it. The next and last speaker I have here is Sid Friedy. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm glad to see you. I thought I would see you this evening, given the item on the agenda, so it's good to see you.
Yes, yes, yes. We've had a couple of conversations in the past. Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Sid Friedy, and I live in South Tempe. And I've been monitoring the short-term rental situation, specifically in my community and the call of Tempe, ever since 16 or either 1350 was passed a number of years ago. I think it's important, I fully support Tempe's full implementation of what's allowed in 1168 for many typical reasons. I think it's important that Tempe incorporate similar codes to our sister cities, such that water doesn't flow downhill. Scottsdale, for example, is known as kind of the bachelor capital of the world, and there have been posts and Nextdoor and social media recommending that those parties look at Tempe, because Tempe is less restrictive. So again, if we don't have something similar to the other areas in our, in Tempe, all that's going to flow downhill in Tempe. Also, in addition, I think the numbers stated in the PowerPoint presentation I saw, something about 1,150 short-term rentals in Tempe, that only incorporates Airbnb and VRBO. A home-to-go is probably a more inclusive representation of the number of short-term rentals in Tempe, and they list that as about 2,595 as of today, which is about 7% of the homes in Tempe. City, or rather, statewide, that number is like 69,000 short-term rentals in the state of Arizona. And in the last calculations, we are about 270,000 homes short, as far as workforce housing and private housing in the state. That number of 69,000 represents about 25% of those homes that are permanently pulled out of the long-term rental marketplace, and that's a significant problem in the state. I think 1168 really addresses kind of the tip of the iceberg, and that really addresses in regulating what the City of Tempe can now do as far as what state regulations are concerned. There's some estimates that private and corporate investors will control up to 50% of some neighborhoods within the next decade. You know, that's simply profiteering greed based upon personal investment and corporate investment. Most recently, last weekend, we had the GAIN program all across the city, and that's getting Arizona involved in neighborhoods. Short-term rentals are 100% contradictory to that concept and destroy the quality of life in our neighborhoods. So it's very important for the city to regulate what they can, and it's also important for the communities to do at the community level, which we are doing, as far as protecting our own community from the invasion of short-term rentals into our housing environment. So again, in summary, I fully support the city's implementation of all that's allowed in 1168, and hope you consider those provisions and make our homes safer for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedy, really appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else in the audience this evening wishing to address the council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the agenda, and I'll move on to item number three, which of course is our issue review session. First item is item 3A, development of the International Green Construction Code. And I see Eric Iverson, our transit manager, and Gregory Kinkel, who's the principal at Quest Energy Group LLC. Welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, this clicker. All right, got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good eve, or good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Eric Iverson. As the, as the mayor announced, I'm a transit manager. I was serving for three months as the interim sustainability director, and I'm here to share the last piece of my role in that, in that job, which is an update on the International Green Construction Code. The department, Sustainability Department, is in a training, so I'm doing this, carrying, happily carrying this project forward. I'm here with Greg Kinkel, who is with one of our consultants that is working on the development of this code. We're not asking for action tonight, we're asking for feedback. We will be back to you in 2023 to ask for action on this. So this is really an update on this endeavor. Want to thank, there's many departments that are working on this project, and we want to thank folks from municipal utilities, community development, engineering, and transportation, specifically Donna Sullivan Hancock, Josh Rutherford, Jeff Tammy Lovich, Barrett Jürgemeyer, they've all been really instrumental in the last six, eight months in developing this code that will be hopefully offered to developers coming through to our city. Those are our thanks to the folks who've been helping develop this, develop this. And with that, I will go to the next slide. So what is, what we want to share tonight is really what is a green code, and where are we going with this? How are we testing green in Tempe? Why is it important? And then really what our next steps are, how we will return to you after our process, and, and what our asks will be. So obviously, the, the efforts that Sustainability Department is undertaking have several performance measures attached to them. You can see those here. We're really looking at, specifically with green code, building a city that can help reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, building a city that can be more water, water-aware and more conservative with our water use, and really just building a city that's more resilient and efficient. A little bit more detail on why this is important. We've been doing green construction in the city for a while. We have several examples that we will share in the, in the upcoming slides, but really what we're talking about is writing a code that will augment and be an option to our conventional building code that we've been using for decades here in the city. So this is, this will be a roadmap for developers to come in and be able to integrate green elements of their building using our code after we, assuming after we get it adopted. It can do all those great things that we know that, when we're addressing climate change, that, that green building does. So solar panels, electric vehicle charging, green roofs, all those kinds of things that we see that we are incorporating in various details on small levels in our city already, but really codifying that and taking it to the next level, making it an option for how we build architecture in our city. You all know that, and I've mentioned that we, we have built some green buildings already. So we really want to codify that and make it something that there is a specific way in which developers can come in and do that. So we have a picture here of the Transportation Center, you're all familiar with that. That incorporates a lot of green building elements, from water harvesting to solar panels, to the orientation of the building, the materials that were used in the building. Those are all things that we want to look at integrating greater into the future and making an option for folks. About six, eight months ago, we hired a consultant team of DWL and Quest, and they're going to be presenting some slides specifically on, on the green building code. So we've been working on line-by-line developing that code in partnership with the other departments that I mentioned earlier. Again, we have done this before with green building, and we want to just take it to the next level and make it an option for all development. We really want to emphasize that green architecture, we feel, is something that does build a more resilient city. It's something that builds architecture that lasts longer, is more energy-efficient. We also, so we want to make this an option for anyone that's coming through our doors to build in Tempe. We want to make sure that it's, that council's aware and the community's aware, as we go through the public process, that this would be a voluntary or an opt-in code, it wouldn't be mandatory. So it'd be something that is available to folks if they so choose, we hope they do, but if they so choose to, to build that way. In the development of the code, we have, we're looking across the world, the consultants are looking at other peer cities, but really focusing on the Valley. This is something that other cities have already done. Scottsdale's been a pioneer in green building, they've been doing it since 2007, they have an adoptive code. So we've learned a lot from them, we're talking to them and really taking from what they have to build something that we can customize in Tempe. Similarly, Phoenix and Chandler have done green buildings. We will be, we're looking at what they're doing with their codes and making sure that we're cross-checking it with what we will come up with in Tempe, what we're going to propose in Tempe. And then finally, so that was kind of the bigger scale, we're looking at other cities in the region and around the world. But finally, we're also, we have a draft code that staff has developed with the consultant team, and we're taking that code and integrating it in with current projects that you all have approved and are in construction, Clark Park, the Tempe Municipal Operations Center, T-MOC, and then Fire Station Number Two on Hardy, just north of Southern. All three of those projects that are under construction right now, we're taking pieces of this code and seeing how it applies to those, and see how we can use this code in those developments, and then help us to refine the code and make sure that we're learning really in real time with these pilot projects to give us the best code that we can possibly have. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Greg, who's going to share with you some of the specifics about the code itself.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, council and mayor, for having me here tonight. I'm Greg Kinkel with Quest Energy Group. We're a green building consulting company that's been located here in Tempe for 20 years. We were partnered with another consultant, DWL, an architecture firm that has been working here in the Valley for, in Tempe for over 70 years. The reason that we were brought in is we have a lot of experience with many green systems, LEED, Green Globes, IGCC. So we're very in-depth knowledge of the different green codes that are out there, but also working with them on many projects in Tempe, many projects across the country and the world, and then working with other cities that have started to adopt these codes. We had a lot of projects, over a dozen projects with City of Scottsdale, where we worked on implementing the IGCC code that they had there. So kind of trying to bring all those elements back in. So kind of the process that we worked with the City of Tempe was the department sitting down and going through the code first, line by line, and really seeing what worked well for them. Then us sitting down with them and going through and talking about, you know, how have we seen that interact in other cities? How have we seen that interact in other projects? How have we seen developers impacted by this? And really bringing in some outside perspective, so we can make the best decisions for the code. And this code is deeper than just energy. We already have the IECC, the International Energy Code, but the IGCC brings a whole nother depth to sustainability. So this covered five different chapters, sorry, six different chapters that we went through and spent six different meetings going through this as a team. So we went through sustainable sites, and we're talking about what type of stormwater management would be required. Heat island, light pollution, bicycles, electric vehicles, carpooling. And we spent a whole meeting working through water issues, talking about zero scape, talking about low-flow fixtures, talking about how we meter the water in there, and spent a large time on our meeting about energy efficiency. So how are renewables incorporated, high-efficiency equipment, looking at LEDs, talking about how we get energy modeling mixed into these projects, so that they're more efficient and integrated. And we spent a good amount of time on indoor environmental quality, which is huge after COVID, of just how do we deal with outside air needs? How do we talk about air filters? No smoking, acoustic design, air testing, really, how does the individual experience the building, and do we make it good for the individuals in there? And then spending time looking at materials, so looking at construction waste management, how do we do recycling in the buildings? How do we require that? What type of green materials are we going to have? And then lastly, was the construction and plans for operation. So how do we make sure these buildings continue to work well? Do we get them commissioned? How do we have them metered? But as you can see, it's a very in-depth code, but really covers the whole gamut of sustainability. And then what I really loved, what the City of Tempe decided to do, was to test this out on three different projects. And not three identical projects, but three very different projects, to see how would this code work. And it gives some skin in the game to say, we're not just requiring something that we haven't tested ourselves, but actually trying this on projects. So the first part, I just want to walk through some of the lessons learned that we saw in these. The T-MOC project, the first one that we looked at, large site, lots of hardscape, larger buildings. We went in here, we started to see that there were some large requirements for acoustic testing and air testing, something that was kind of costly for the project. And when we actually sat down with the users and the team, didn't seem like there was a lot of value that they were getting in there. So we were able to identify areas that were costly, didn't provide value, and then make adjustments. So we took these out of the code. And then we're able to look at other cities and see, they removed these sections too from the code, so we're able to reestablish that this was the right direction. And we looked at Clark Park, completely different type of site, lots of landscape, not a lot of hardscape, smaller buildings, a lot more community interaction. And in this project, we looked at the renewable requirements. So the green code requires that you have renewables on the project. And here, again, we saw that this was challenging, but we also saw that it was important, and it was something that's important to Tempe and that we wanted to incorporate. So we looked at, once things were important but costly or challenging, was how do we be flexible? How can we adjust the code to make it work for the City of Tempe and for the developers out there? So we offered more flexibility to look at solar-ready or renewable energy certificates or off-site production, so finding other ways to make the code a little more flexible. Then the last project that we worked with was the Fire Station Number Two, again, a completely different type of project. This project has a small site, two different phasing, a very different type than the other two projects we saw. And on this one, we had a very tight parking lot, and we had to look at site vehicle provisions. So how are we going to require EV charging? How are we going to require carpool? Does it really make sense for a fire station? So looking at these, it was challenging, but again, saw that it was important. So finding ways in the code where we can be flexible and adjust that. So instead of having just these straight requirements saying, let's just make 5% dedicated to one or two of those types of different vehicles or vehicle provisions. So really spending the time to adjust the code to make it work for the city, work for developers, and work for the community out there.
Thanks, Greg. Couple more slides. So want to just share with you next steps, what we're going to be doing over the next couple of months, two to six months, continue working with all the different departments that this code could affect. And really, community development's been the lead, sustainability's been the lead, community development is instrumental in this. It is a code that will eventually be housed out of community development. And one of the commitments that you all have made, and that community development is making, is that we will, we would have, assuming this, this is a code that gets adopted, we would have a green construction code specialist that would be available on staff to help anyone that wants to build in this way. So we'd have, we'd be facilitating a little ease of doing this type of construction. We will also, you know, in partnership and working with those different departments over the next several months, continue learning from the pilot projects that Greg shared, and really just refine this code. We're going to meet with other stakeholders, developers, make sure that this is something that works for everyone, and is optimal for Tempe. And then we expect to be back to the council in 2023, probably first half of 2023, to share a final code, ask for adoption, and, and seek to move it forward. We would also, there's a process to do, to do a code adoption, you have to go through a formal process, there's upwards of a 90-day period, similar to a development agreement when a major development's being approved. So that process would also have to be undertaken through community development in order to make that happen. That would all be part of our next steps. We also want to mention that, again, just make really clear that this is an opt-in or voluntary code that we would be seeking to institute. It would not be mandatory, but we would want to look at having the council explore the possibility of adopting a policy for our own buildings to be green, to be built green, which we have been doing already, but looking at having the council maybe adopt a policy for our municipal buildings to be done with this code as a way to exemplify our leadership. I'll just leave you with one, the, the image that's on the screen here that shows a recent construction project development that was approved by the council, I think earlier in spring this year, at First and Farmer. It's a development, it's not a municipal building, it's a mixed-use development, it's incorporating a lot of green features that the developer wanted to do, that they heard from the neighborhoods that they wanted to do. So a lot of this is already in the interest of the development community and, and our residents, and so we just want to take this to, to the point where people can engage a code like this more freely. And with that, I'll open it up for, for questions, comments.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, appreciate the presentation. First, let me go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you. I, I love this idea of the green codes, and I have a couple of questions. So when I got on council, I read Scottsdale's green codes and went through that and was trying to figure out, because I was told that we didn't have one, so I just wanted to see what it, one looked like. But my question is, do, are there other cities that are around here that have them? That it's a requirement for the green codes?
So City of Scottsdale, right now, in the last couple of months, has been going to council about approving a mandatory green building code. So they would take their voluntary code that they currently have and make it mandatory for all commercial buildings and multifamily buildings in City of Scottsdale. It has not been approved yet, but it looks like there's a very good chance that it would be. Besides that, it's not mandatory anywhere else in Arizona, but City of Phoenix has a voluntary program, and there's a lot of other cities in the country that are doing voluntary programs.
Okay, that's great. I, I love the fact that we are, we are leading by example, because that's what Tempe does. I like that we're doing that, that we are doing that on the other buildings, and I like, just like you had said, the fact that there were three totally different ones that we are working on. But anyway, great job, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. I absolutely support having a green code for the City of Tempe as far as municipal buildings go. I know we're already doing that, but we should absolutely codify that moving forward. As far as private construction projects go, if there's a way we can think of like creative incentives to, to push these people towards, you know, I know it's voluntary now, and there might be a discussion in the future about, you know, a mandatory program, but until that discussion happens, if there's a way we can incentivize developers creatively, I don't know what that would look like, that's for you guys to figure out, but, you know, I would certainly be very interested in hearing more about that. Thank you.
I think that, that's a great point. And City of Scottsdale has used their voluntary code as, you know, a negotiating tool that they've used during the development process, as well as having different incentives in there. So I think it's a really great point.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. Great presentation. And I know that Councilmember QB, a former Councilmember QB and I worked on this for a long time, so it's really, really fun to see it come to, to light and, and be moving forward in the positive direction. So really appreciate your, your help and all the staff that have worked on this. I know, like you, Eric, you listed a lot of staff, so some of them are here this evening. So thank you so much for really working together, and I would be, I really do want to have incentives also, what Councilmember Keating said. I'd rather do it with a carrot than a stick, and I am disappointed that we didn't beat Scottsdale. But anyway, that's just my competitive nature. So thanks for the wonderful presentation, and I'm really looking forward to implementing this in our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's, I think we're headed in the right direction on this. Just a, just a note, and a suggestion for expansion of language, when it comes to trees, I think maybe expand it a little bit more, so that we encourage really what we want in that shade. We certainly want trees, but in the city, if we're planting trees, we want to make sure that they thrive. So I think we've been playing with language about shade being the critical component, and either by trees or engineered or designed shade.
Structural is what we've been calling it, tree or structural shade.
Great.
And that's certainly what we're looking at. Great point.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Any other councilmembers, any further comments or questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say the same thing, I totally agree with everything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item 3B, short-term rental update. I already see Tom and Lisette coming forward, so I will turn it over to them.
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. Joined here on my left by Lisette Camacho, Financial Services Director. I'm Tom Dunson, Deputy City Manager, and pleased to be presenting this issue before you today. Just at a very, very high level, what we're here today is to really kind of overview, and it was already referred to by a couple of public comments, of 1168. 1168 addresses short-term rentals. We'll give a little bit of history on, on how it got to where it was got, where it, where it is today. Just so you know, this is a multi-departmental effort. We had representatives from Community Development, Fire and Medical Rescue, the Police Department, City Attorney, and our own Jess Rankin, who's in the audience, help us out on this as well. So there was a lot of eyes on this, and what you see today is kind of a culmination of what we're, what we are recommending as a group. And I do appreciate the public comments and the support of, of this issue going forward. Next slide, thanks. So, like I said, we're going to give a quick overview of, of kind of how this has evolved. We're going to look specifically at Senate Bill 1168. That was the bill passed in the most recent legislative session, and the impact that, what it allows cities to do. I can tell you, we can't go more restrictive than what 1168 allows us to do, and that's, and, and other cities acknowledge that. And so what you're seeing, and basically what we're recommending, is what 1168 allows us to do in order to track and make the neighborhood safe, is, is fully implement what 1168 allows us to do. And then, of course, get council feedback, and we'll, we'll kind of tell you where we're going, the public process, after, after tonight's presentation. This issue aligns with performance measures 1.19, housing quality standards 3.01, property code enforcement. So a quick background, what you see here is where 1168 resides in state statute, but a little bit of history, in 2016, the legislature passed Senate Bill 1350, and basically what 1350 said is, we must allow short-term rentals to be able to operate in our neighborhoods. Roll forward to 2019, the, the state passed House Bill 2672, which allowed the cities to basically step it up a little bit and, and implement certain things to identify short-term rentals that are operating in their community. In short, what it did is, it allowed cities to pass ordinances for registration of short-term rentals, providing cities with contact information and, and a certain few things required, TPT licenses. But it was, it was limiting on what cities could do. But it was, it was limiting on what cities could do. Now, with the passage of 1168, we are able to do additional sort of, of regulations to an extent of short-term rentals in our neighborhoods. Next slide. So right now, with 2672, back in December 2019, we updated the zoning and development code. Depending on your direction tonight and where we go, we would bring back an ordinance for council adoption in the future on the proper place to put these additional regulations for short-term rentals. I'll turn it over to Lisette.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. In the city of Tempe, there's about 1,200 short-term rentals. That information came from Deckard Technologies. It's a real estate data and analytic software. The short-term rentals in Tempe goes for an average daily rate of $190, and we have an occupancy rate of 71%. As you can see on this table, short-term rentals are about 3.1% of all residential homes in Tempe. In Tempe, we have about 37,000 residential homes. As Tom mentioned earlier, the passage of House Bill 2672 allowed cities to implement additional public health and safety regulations on short-term rentals. And in December of 2019, the city council passed an ordinance that required short-term rental owners to register with the city, provide emergency contact information, obtain a sales tax license. The ordinance also prohibited the use of short-term rentals for commercial use, housing sex offenders, selling liquor, and adult-oriented businesses. And the city also already has ordinances that address noise, nuisance parties, and unlawful gathering. Civil and criminal misdemeanor penalties may apply. Complaints can be submitted through Tempe 311 or the police department's non-emergency line for after-hour complaints. I'll turn it over back to Tom.
These things are advancing themselves. It's a miracle.
Are you doing it?
So, let's get into what 1168 allows us to do. I'll go through these as quick as I can. Basically, what allows cities to do is require a license or permit, I'll probably refer to it as a license as we go through this. We can deny licenses based on, you know, if they, if they provide false information, if they fail to pay a license fee, and then we are recommending a license fee. If they're currently operating under suspended license, they need to wait a certain time period before they reapply. And, excuse me, we can deny it if the owner's designee is, or the owner or the owner's designee is a registered sex offender convicted of certain criminal, really, really felony crimes. Next slide. So what can, what can we require short-term rental owners to do? We can require that they display their permit or license on the advertisements when they advertise their, their properties up for rent. We can, we can cause them to cease operations if they are not licensed. Notification, the third bullet point, is a, is a big thing that's, that's discussed quite a bit. We can require in our ordinance that short-term rental owners notify properties directly beside them, adjacent, across the street, and diagonally across the street, that they are operating a short-term rental property. And as Mr. South talked about, they've got resources that they, they certainly would provide short-term rental owners to be able to assist in this notification process. They've got letters that are, that are pre-done, and again, it's just, just in order to make the short, these short-term rentals compliant. There's a requirement, or we can require short-term rental owners to have liability insurance at a minimum of $500,000. And then there can be a requirement that they perform sex offender background checks, and we'll get into it, and what we're recommending, and we'll talk about that. There's been, there's been discussion on these background checks of whether we want to extend it, and we'll get into that in a few slides. Next slide. Cities can suspend a license for up to 12 months. You can see for the various reasons on how we can suspend it. If there's a felony offense, serious physical injury or death, housing a sex offender, allowing adult-oriented business, operating or maintaining a sober living home. And the last one is if they're, if they're using a short-term rental, that would require a special event permit, then that is, that is restricted, or we can restrict that. Next slide. We can also impose civil penalties, and we'll go into that in our recommendations. If an owner fails to apply for a license, if we notify them and they don't get in compliance and continue to operate, we can impose a civil penalty, $1,000 a month, every month until they get registered. We can also impose civil penalties for verified violations, sort of on a, on a scale. In other words, first violation, $500, second violation, $1,000, up to $3,500. Turn it back to Lisette.
Okay, the top in light blue section of this chart shows that what cities have in their ordinances prior to the passage of 1168. The bottom in the dark blue section is what we're going to discuss in the proposed changes to the city code. Just background information, this month, the city of Scottsdale, city of Paradise Valley, and the city of Mesa, which is not depicted on this chart, they passed their updated ordinances this month. And city of Scottsdale and Mesa requiring the neighbor notification, Paradise Valley is not. And all three cities are doing the liability insurance, the license, and the permit fee of $250. And they're also issuing penalties for failure to obtain license, a license or for other violations of the city code. The next three slides will cover the proposed changes to the city code. The recommendations are consistent with Senate Bill 1168 and do not go beyond what is allowed by the bill. The recommendations are also consistent with the League of Cities and Towns Model City Ordinance. The first recommendation is to require an annual business license and assess a non-refundable fee of $250. And as part of the license requirement, the applicant must show proof of a valid sales tax license and evidence of rent, that the rental property is registered with the Maricopa County Assessor's Office. The next requirement is to require the owner of the short-term rentals to obtain liability insurance of at least $500,000. The next recommendations are to require neighbor notification and also expanding on the role of the emergency contact. The owner must provide notice of any change of the contact information within 10 business days to the city, and the emergency contact must respond to complaints within one hour if public safety, police, and fire is dispatched, and within 24 hours if public safety is not dispatched. And the next recommendation is to require sex offender background check of the booking guest only. And the last recommendation you're seeing here is to allow for penalties and fines for violations of federal, state, and local laws, including suspension of the license for up to 12 months, and also the, the fines and escalating penalties for multiple violations. I'll turn it over back to Tom to go through the last slide.
Last slide before we can open it, before we open it up. There we go. Like anything, we have a robust public outreach planned, really for the month of November. We need, we, by law, we're required to post a, a public notice if we intend to implement fees, and of course, this is dependent on council direction. We have a scheduled presentation to the Neighborhood Advisory Committee that we have presented to before. They understand this issue. We post this issue on public, or, excuse me, Tempe Forum to get feedback, and then we would schedule two public forums in addition to that. Right now, it says the week of November 14th. We haven't scheduled that yet, but again, dependent on the feedback we get, we'll, we'll get right to it. If everything goes, or in, unless, if we don't come back, or if council doesn't want additional discussion on this, the first public hearing of the ordinance would be December 15th, with the second public hearing January 5th to 23, and then implementation or effective date of March 7th. And with that, mayor and council, open it up for questions.
Sounds good. Let me first go to Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Very clear and concise. I just, the March 7th date is right in the middle of spring training, so I'm wondering, do we really want to have it, that date? So just a question.
Yeah, good question. And, and the demand on the, on the short-term rentals during that time period, we can, we cannot implement sooner than March 7th, so if we want to avoid that time period, we would basically have to push it back. And there's no problem pushing it back. If it's, if it's council's desire, we can push it back to the end of March, and that's perfectly acceptable.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hodge.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. I think I talked to you about this, Tom. I want to go back to the sex offender part of it, and I want to add, I'm going to say what I had to add in there. I know we can't get every single person to be, you know, looked at as a sex offender, but I want something in, in contract saying that if the person who books it brings someone in, they're liable for that person who work, is, who they bring in there, because that brings some more guarantee to the neighborhoods in that way, so they can say, if you, you know, you have registered, you have, you're the person who is signing up for the short term, and if you bring someone in and they find, and it happens to be a sex offender, that you are liable for that person, whoever is the person who is renting the house at that time. So we talked about that, because most of our rentals are in neighborhoods close to schools, close to parks. So I just want to make an extra careful around that when it comes to our kids in our neighborhoods. So that's a part I wanted to like to add in there.
Yeah, and just a little bit of clarity, the Model City Ordinance produced by the League does have recommended language for that. Basically, what it would, what it would say is that we could require sex offender background checks for all guests, and that the owner would be responsible for maintaining that documentation, is, is how the Model City Ordinance reads.
Sounds good. So just a really quick thing with council. So Councilmember Hodge has raised adding that. Is everyone here okay with adding that? That language? Okay. I am, well, Councilmember Navarro, please.
No, I, I am, but I guess my question is, is with VRBO, Airbnb, and all this, do we match their legal language accordingly to these types of issues or not? Fairly, I'm beginning, not in the back, no.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Navarro, I'm not sure about that answer. I know that the Verbos and Airbnbs, I'm not sure which one of them, you want to handle that?
Mayor, members of the council, the online lodging marketplace, including Airbnb and VRBO, they did support the bill and the requirement for the background check. And within, within the, the Model City Ordinance, it does state that the requirement for the background check, if performed by the online lodging marketplace, will be satisfied if they do the performance of the background check.
So, and to Councilmember, how's this stipulation, or any of the draft, how does this get communicated? Is it in a package that's going to be, I don't know, a part of VRBO for Arizona, for Tempe specifically? How do we get this, how does this get communicated, I guess?
Mayor, members of the council, what I've seen, what other cities have done, is incorporated a requirement within the ordinance. So what I've seen is Paradise Valley is, so far, is the only one that's requiring the, the background check of all guests, so the booking guest and all the guests coming into the vacation rental. Their requirement is for the owner to retain the, the background check or the proof of the background check. They have to retain that for 12 months, and the, the owner must be able to provide the proof when the city requests it, or if police request it.
So then it comes up to the owner to provide this information to the people that purchase?
Mayor, members of the council, the burden is, it, with the owner, but the online lodging marketplace can perform the background check on their behalf. If they don't do it, then the, the owner must.
However, yeah, but however it is, the owner is, is responsible for this information to be communicated to the people that are renting out his or her property, so that there's no misinterpretation of, of what we're requiring and how we're requiring it.
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. And as Mr. South talked about a little bit earlier, one of the, one of the services that Arizona for Responsible Tourism has offered to do is educate short-term rental owners on how to comply with this. They would, they, they've offered to assist us in, in, here's how you get the information to short-term rental owners. We would put information on how to operate on our website. And that's, that is, it's one of the tricky things on, on implementing this, but, but it's one of the things that, you know, we just, we do our best efforts to get that information out and as many resources as we can. And again, they've offered assistance for this.
And that's the thing, as a person that would rent property here or there, first of all, obviously, we, we enjoy tourism, but we enjoy it responsibly, right? So I think it's just that, as, as long as that's, however we can get it best as possible communicated, or that these requirements are, you know, and, and hopefully, to the gentleman's point, we're consistent around the region. I know that we have some, maybe some here and there's, that one city does and the other doesn't, but for, for the most part, it seems like we're kind of all falling in line. I think that when you stay in Tempe, you want to hopefully know the rules and regulations of where you're staying at and the property that, that requires what, X, Y, and Z. So, and to the point of the modifying and change, I, I think I would support it. I, I guess legally, I maybe have some questions, is, is that required? Or, and I know that Councilmember Chin probably wants to add to that, so I'll let her go.
Okay. Sounds good. Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I, I think to, to clarify, while I was trying to understand, let me reiterate what I think I'm hearing that we're trying to do, and is to, to move and implement everything allowable under 1168 at this time. We will continue to evaluate our needs as a community and see if we need to adjust, strengthen ordinances as needed, but this is the initial plan. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of council, that's correct. And remember, there is a public input process.
Right.
And we would absolutely get the public input, and I'm sure they'll have a lot to say on this, on, on the particular issue Councilmember Navarro brought up, and, and we would bring that back to council, along with the proposed ordinance, and certainly you could make, you know, changes at that time as well.
And, and tonight, you're just seeking the, the consensus to move forward with the plan as you've proposed. We can adjust a bit as we go. This is not finalized.
You absolutely can. That's, you know, we've got the public process for sure, yeah.
Thank you. Just a quick question. You would need, though, consensus on adding, though, the item that Councilmember Hodge was requesting, though, correct?
We could, we could certainly add that item, take that out to the public, get their feedback, and say, here was the, here was the council direction, you know, and I don't want to, I don't want to jump ahead of council, clearly, but we could say council's in support of all this. By the way, council is also in support of background checks for all guests, and get the feedback, and, and let the public know that, that, you know, you will make the ultimate decision, but we would absolutely bring their feedback back to the council.
Sure.
Councilmember Chin?
Clarification, and I'm looking a few rows back also. I think it's standard practice, when you rent a short-term rental, it's not unusual for the owner to ask the, the guests to submit a list of all guests that will be, it's not... Perhaps in Europe, they do that. But I, I think that may be something for consideration. I think perhaps that's what Councilmember Hodge is asking, that, that we're asking that for consideration. Perhaps not as an absolute mandate tonight, but to look into how we could include that.
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Just a couple of comments, I'm going to go to Councilmember Keating. My preference would be to move forward with all, with everything you discussed, including what Councilmember Hodge talked about as well, because my perspective is, if we're going to be going out for public hearings and getting feedback from stakeholders and from residents, we can obviously make adjustments at that point, but I would rather do something that strengthens the ordinance a little bit, especially since the League of Arizona Cities and Towns has Model City Code that actually speaks to this issue. If we were creating something completely out of whole cloth that hadn't been talked about before, then I might be concerned that we were going to run afoul of the law in some way. But given that the League of Cities and Towns has already thought about this and actually has created model language for us to use, I would prefer to have that in there to let the public and frankly, people weigh in. And then, as you said, we can make, we can, you know, vote on something final when we get around to that time period. But that's my perspective. But let me go to Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so actually, I was kind of had my thunder stolen a little bit on this, but I, I was kind of thinking, you know, we, we move forward with what we have here as far as reaching consensus to do public input and get draft ordinance. to do public input and get draft ordinance put together based on the league's model and then have whatever committee would be necessary, look at the additional requirements that Councilmember Hodge is, is talking about for maybe, maybe a future change in the ordinance or maybe we do it before a final ordinance is even brought forward. Because to me, there seems to be a little bit of confusion about the process and of how all this would, would happen with the various booking apps and things like that. So that was just could be my suggestion, but if we have four people that say, hey, like, let's do what Councilmember Hodge is saying, then I'm finally supporting it at that level as well.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Councilmember Hodge?
I just want it to be in there in the beginning so we can have that conversation. If it's not part of it, then they may not have it when they go to the open part of the meetings. If they, if it comes back and it doesn't show that that's what people supporting Tempe, I understand that, but I've heard from other people that they would like to be able to have that conversation about sex offenders near schools and neighborhoods. Because Tempe is one of the, one of the cities that majority of their schools are in neighborhoods. A lot of schools have community schools outside of neighborhoods, but we are a city that has that. So I want to put that out there for our neighborhoods. I would rather it be involved in there in the beginning. If it comes out that it doesn't mean that we can always take it out or adjust it, but I want that, I'm just asking the council, can we add that as a part of it so we can get the communication out there and get information and dialogue around it?
Okay. Sounds good. So I'll look to the council once again for consensus on that about whether or not people would like to add that in on the front end at Councilmember Hodge's request.
I think I understand what you're, what you're trying to do there. It's to put it on the checklist so that we're at least talking about it, because if it's not on the checklist, it may not come up. So I support putting it on the checklist just to, just to have it be part of the conversation. So I see what you're doing.
Thank you. Okay. I do as well? Anyone else? Okay. Okay. Sounds good. Wonderful. Any other comments or questions by council? Great. Thank you. I mean, this is obviously a very big deal for the community and clearly, I think that, you know, something needed to be done around this issue. And so I appreciate all the staff work and trying to make sure that we're conforming to the legislation, but, but that we're trying to implement something as quickly as possible because it really is, it really is a challenging issue in our city and especially with the lack of available housing. The more houses, many times they get taken off the market. Sometimes that's driving up costs for everybody else who's trying to get into the housing market. So once again, we understand the free market, but I, but I, but I agree that some appropriate regulations are necessary, so I appreciate what you guys have done. So thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Next up, item 3C, the Age Friendly Tempe Action Plan. Let's see, Naomi Marie and Seema are coming up right now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Naomi Farrell, Director of Office of Education, Career and Family Services. I'm here with Marie Raymond, Manager, and Seema Garrett-Gozley, Senior Coordinator to present the Age Friendly Tempe Action Plan. That plan's been provided to all of you in your packets. Tonight, we'll provide an overview of the process as well as highlights from the plan. Staff will be seeking Mayor and Council consent of the action plan in order to submit to AARP for certification. We would also like to take a moment to thank those that participate in the development of this plan, including the Age Friendly Action Team. Thank you. Age Friendly Action Team members and community partners and older adult residents. So according to the World Health Organization, age-friendly environments foster healthy and active aging and enable older adults to age safely in place that is right for them, to be free from poverty, to continue to develop personally and to contribute to their communities while retaining autonomy, health, and dignity. Because older adults know best what they need, they are at the center of any effort to create a more age-friendly community. The physical and social environments in our cities and communities are powerful influences on the experience of aging and the opportunities that aging affords. Some key points as to why an age-friendly community is important. The population of the United States is rapidly aging. By 2035, for the first time in the nation's history, the number of adults over 65 will be greater than the number of children under 18. In Arizona, the 65 and older population has been the fastest-growing demographic since 2010. As our population ages, we need to adapt and prepare our communities, and well-designed, livable communities help to sustain economic growth, support healthier residents, and encourage inclusiveness among all ages.
The City of Tempe formally applied to AARP's Age Friendly Network in April of 2020. And this aligns with our Strategic Priority Performance Measure 3.30, which was to achieve the Age Friendly Community Designation for Livability from AARP. In our commitment letter, we stated our intent to pursue the active engagement of older adults in the planning process through outreach and inclusion by bringing the age-friendly conversation to older adults where they live and recreate. We stated that we would coordinate inclusive conversations with internal and external stakeholders who are strategically in line with creating a livable community. And we stated our intent to establish a plan of action that responds to the needs identified by community members, specifically older adults. The Age Friendly Tempe Action Plan centers around the eight domains of livability, which were established by the World Health Organization. We understand that the availability and quality of these community features impact the well-being of older adults and help make communities more livable for people of all ages. The eight domains include outdoor spaces in buildings, which is the availability of outdoor spaces, buildings, and recreational facilities that are safe and accessible; the transportation domain, which includes safe and affordable modes of public and private transportation; housing, including having a range of age-friendly housing options and home modification programs for aging in place; social participation includes having access to leisure and cultural activities, including opportunities for older residents to socialize and engage with their peers as well as with younger people; with respect and social inclusion, there are programs that foster respect and social inclusion that promote ethnic and cultural diversity as well as a multi-generational interaction and dialogue. For civic participation and employment, this would include paid work and volunteer activities for older residents and opportunities to engage in the formulation of policies relevant to their lives. For communication and information, it would include access to communications technology and other resources so older residents can connect with their community, friends, and family. And finally, with community support and health services, that would include access to home-based care services, health clinics, and community programs that promote wellness and active aging. So AARP has a detailed process and program cycle that we've used as a guide to create our Age Friendly Tempe Action Plan. We're currently on step three of the age-friendly process and we're ready to submit our action plan to AARP's network after council consent. AARP's Age Friendly Program Cycle is designed to be continually reviewed every three years.
We developed, we developed the Age Friendly Tempe Action Plan with an inclusive and multi-layered approach. The age, during the phase one, the Age Friendly Tempe Action Team was created in 2021 and included city staff from multiple departments such as human services, transportation, park and recreation, and Tempe Fire's multidisciplinary team.
Just one quick thing. Can you move the microphone a little bit closer?
Sorry.
Perfect. Thank you.
Of course. The team, the team also included dementia-friendly Tempe volunteers, older adult community members, partner agencies such as Tempe Community Council, Tempe Community Action Agencies, Ability 360, plus also community stakeholders and ASU faculty from the Center for Innovation in Healthy and Resilient Aging. During the phase two, the Tempe Community Council Community Need Assessment Survey was conducted by Corona Insights and they mailed this survey to 1,500 residents living in a high neighborhood, high-needs neighborhoods and Tempe senior center members. Age Friendly Tempe staff also held focus groups with senior center participants, caregivers, volunteers, and advocates from dementia-friendly Tempe. In June of 2022, staff gave presentation about the Age Friendly Tempe Initiative at the First Elder Abuse Awareness Conference held in Tempe and collected participants' feedback. All findings were compiled and evaluated against the eight domains of livability to identify specific areas of improvement as they related to the Age Friendly Tempe Initiative. And during the phase three, the results of the evaluation were then compared to other action plans within the city to determine which of the residents' concerns were currently being addressed by other departments. We have included these concerns and, and the action steps to address, the address in our Age Friendly Tempe Action Plan to demonstrate Tempe's commitment to livability for everyone in the community. The remaining key findings were organized by focus area rather than by domains, as many of the remaining concerns involve multiple domains. In the following slides, we shared the key finding from the data evaluations, what Tempe is currently doing to address these concerns, the challenges that remains, recommendation on how to address these challenges, and the key partners that can help us create innovative
Transportation is a key concern for older adults. The Vision Zero Action Plan addresses most of the concerns reported regarding transportation, including brighter streetlights, traffic calming, crosswalk safety, and driver education. Mobility issues remain as a major concern for older adults, particularly access to accessible transportation when they are no longer driving. Even though Tempe has a wide variety of public transit options, many older adults lack knowledge of these options or see them as something for students. Action team members recommended the creation of a marketing campaign designed specifically for older adults, utilizing proven techniques to promote transportation options in Tempe. Team members suggested making this campaign available in multiple languages, in print and online. Social isolation is another key concern for older adults, resulting in a lack of involvement in the Tempe community. Many older adults are unable to access information about community events, activities, and opportunities that are available to them. The Office of Education, Career, and Family Services and Community Services offer a wide variety of methods for older adults to engage with the community, such as senior centers, active adult classes, inclusive age-friendly events, and employment and volunteer services. Older adults have difficulty navigating technology to connect to their community and friends, resulting in social isolation. Our action plan recommends promoting our Connect Tempe program, which offers tools and technology training specifically designed for older adults to improve their technical confidence and to decrease feelings of isolation. We also recommend updating our seniors, our city's senior services webpages to use images and icons, and this could simplify the steps for older adults to locate information online and help to address social isolation concerns. Older adults want to be active and participate in their community through multi-generational opportunities, but lack the ability to easily find options that work within their needs. An opportunity that could address these challenges could include incorporating a new older adult-focused volunteer opportunities webpage into a redesigned senior services webpage, and this could help meet that need. Older adults want to remain independent and age at home. Older adults are often overwhelmed by the sheer multitude of responsibilities and they rely on support from family and friends. Through programs such as dementia-friendly Tempe and Memory Cafe, the city provides support that older adults and caregivers need. We heard from many action team members that caregivers are overwhelmed and need additional support and resources to support their loved ones and their desire to age in place. Recommendations in the action plan include creating a senior advisor position to address the need for accessible, personalized, local support that would benefit both older adults and their caregivers. Action team members also recommended the development of a program to fund and distribute medical alert-style systems to at-risk residents as a way to help address caregiver concerns for low-income loved ones living alone. Older adults are concerned about the rapid increase of rental pricing in Tempe and of being at risk of losing their homes. The city's Housing Division provides resources and support for residents that are at risk of losing their homes and partners with agencies that can provide valuable support in these situations. In addition, Tempe is actively working to ensure affordable housing options are available in the community. Many older adults live on fixed incomes and have difficulty keeping up with regular home maintenance and repairs. We recommend ensuring older adults are aware of the housing supports and resources offered through the City of Tempe and its partner agencies, such as the Emergency Repair Program, Tempe Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and rent and utility assistance through the Community Action Program. In fact, I just recently saw a photo of a gentleman and our emergency repair program helped support the installation of a ramp for him so that he has easier access for, to enter his home and so that he can remain in his home.
So the anticipated impacts of implementing the recommendations in the action plan will be, one, decrease social isolation and health concerns for older adults, increase participation in civic volunteer work and community connections, and three, older adults have the information, resources, and support they need to have a quality of life and age well in their homes. The next steps will be, after receiving a planned consent from Mayor and Council, is to submit the action plan to AARP for certification. After certification, we will begin implementing the action plan. Over the next three years, Age Friendly Tempe will conduct quarterly meetings with the action team and community partners to track implementation and share successes as well as address challenges. We will share our best practices and progress reports with AARP and then restart the process again. And that includes our presentation, and we are here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. I've just got a couple of quick comments, then I want to go to Vice Mayor Adams. Just really appreciate all of this. I think that we have so many people who are living in our community, people are living a lot longer now than they used to in the past, and we have a lot of people who are growing older within the City of Tempe. And so with that, we've always talked about, how do we update a lot of our services and the supports that we provide? And I think this draft plan is just one more kind of indicator of the fact that we all recognize that, that our staff is working hard towards making sure that our seniors can age with dignity. And so I really appreciate all of this. And the other thing is too, just even from an affordable housing perspective, we're recognizing now that the fastest group of people that are becoming homeless as a result of being on fixed incomes and rents going up, you know, 15, 20, 30% in one year are frankly, our seniors. And no one, after they've lived that long, deserves to live the rest of their life, you know, with that lack of dignity for being pushed out of a place, a safe, comfortable place to live. And I know the council right now is talking about a couple of options, whatever, that would provide additional affordable senior housing. And I know there's been conversations about future senior housing opportunities as well. So I just wanted to point out that that is, it's a very important statistic, that the people who are being most displaced by what's going on with these rising rents and housing prices being so out of control are frankly, our senior citizens. And as a person who has an 83-year-old father, it's something I think about all the time. So thank you for your work on this and thank you for including all of that, including the affordable housing piece. With that, I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Adams, then I'll go to Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. It's, it's nice to see our seniors featured as a focus for our organization. I do think that having that orbit in South Tempe, it goes everywhere else in Tempe, but not in South Tempe, would be helpful for seniors being able to age in place because a lot of them, obviously, you know, can't drive anymore, and I think that would help them get around and feel more included in our community. So that's something that I've heard from our South Tempe residents. So just something to be considered, and I, I know that involves valuable to, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Next up, Councilmember Hodge, followed by Councilmember Chin.
I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. It was phenomenal. Also, with also, I know that you guys do a program where the seniors help read and initiate to students. Just wanted to highlight that, too. That's a great program, and I get a lot of feedback on how well that is. And I think that hearing that Tempe does a lot to make sure that all of our constituents are inclusive in our plan. So thanks so much for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Chin, followed by Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. A couple of things, a little bit of feedback, two points. One, it was great to hear that you're partnering with Neighbors Helping Neighbors, especially with this pop- especially with this population, and for our seniors who want to age in place in their own homes. So I remember a few years ago, I rode with our solid waste drivers, and they are eyes and ears on the road in the neighborhoods. I think it would be helpful to share some information with your colleagues in both solid waste and code compliance because they often will see houses where they just need a couple of branches cut, and this actually happened. The driver I was with, Dan, said, "I know they're older. I've helped cut some of the branches for them, but if they knew that they had colleagues that they could work with so that we're all helping our community members, that would be great." Second, you talked about the digital divide and sometimes how it's hard for seniors to navigate. Well, I would suggest having clearly placed a phone number that's staffed by someone that is a one-stop shop for seniors to call. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Navarro, followed by Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I mean, this is obviously one of those things that we are in the midst of, and we just need to really expand on this. So I think it's great. When we talk about, I love the thing about marketing the transportation and just marketing it for seniors because that is one of those things with the Orbit bus system is often like, "Well, it's not for us," and you know, that kind of thing. I think the branding of that is incredible, and I think that's something we definitely need to do. Having parents that live here in Tempe and a lot of parents that we grew up with, they just stay in their homes. And here they are, and now they're aging in place, so to speak. And the opportunity just to have that transitional housing or affordable housing is key. I think it's key also with the infill properties that we potentially might have within the city because having housing near loved ones is also strategic too and/or near their location that they have known for a long time. I think that's an investment that the city possibly could get into and maybe securing that land or working with a developer that actually can facilitate. We do have one here for affordable seniors right here in downtown Tempe, which has been tremendous. But I think that we have the opportunity to extend that. So I think those are good bits of information. On the state level, I know that there's information and a lot of education on the state's doing, and having a representative from Tempe would be huge on that. I do know also even my aide, she's on the chair for the senior, or task force against, I'm sorry, for health and safety with the state level, and it has ties with the aging in place. So I think, you know, collectively, I think we all could basically just make sure that regionally we are part of that network and making sure that we're listening in to what they're doing and making sure we're not missing out on any money out there too. And also advocate. That's the biggest thing that we always miss out at the state level is having that Tempe sound and our representatives at the Tempe or at the state level to take that water for us also.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you. I'm so excited about this program. The fact that you guys have been working on it for so long, but that it's all come together and it looks amazing, all the data and everything you've got in here, really, I am truly excited. And the fact that we really are focusing on our seniors in here, and we have, you know, so many seniors that want to age in places, we have all said. And I think this is really important, and I'm so excited about supporting this. Councilmember Chin mentioned something about Tempe Neighbors Helping Neighbors. That is such a great program, and I've heard really wonderful stories on this group going to different houses and really being able to help other people out. I think that's a great thing to do. And we put up Christmas lights at somebody's house, and that was a really big deal. And anyway, so I love that you guys have incorporated that. It was Experience Core that Councilmember Hodge, I think, was mentioning about the reading program, which is really good. My only thought is, in my neighborhood, I started a neighborhood newsletter. We reactivated a newsletter. We have 154 houses in our neighborhood. There were 16 seniors that didn't have an email and would not get on the internet. So I know that we're looking at, you guys had mentioned updating the website and doing things like that. So in our neighborhood, what we ended up having to do is that the editor of our newsletter, she rode her bike. She would send out emails to everybody with a newsletter, and then she hand-delivered newsletters to everybody. So you know, the beauty of, we forgot the beauty of writing letters, and some of our seniors want to have those letters, and they really do pay attention to what comes in the mail. So when we're doing these things, maybe we need to be thinking about where we're trying to get the information to, how we're doing that, and actually sending out letters. So anyway, I'm excited about this. I'm happy to support it. Is there anything else after this that you guys need? Or once you submit this, when later on, if you need something else from us, please let us know what we can do to help move this on because this is wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great presentation. Next up, item number four, called the Audience for Committee of the Whole Items. There's one item ready for city council direction. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on this item? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll move to item number five A, Items Ready for City Council Direction or Status Update. Just wanted to make a note here on item five A-1 that I'll turn to the council to see if they have any comments about this before we go into updates. So in our council rules, we're required to reassess our council committees every year in July. Also, we had two new council members who were elected earlier this year. The council held a retreat back in late August to discuss the council committees and which issues were important to focus on. As a result of those discussions, I am formally announcing tonight of new, the appointment tonight of new members to the council committees, and also a few changes to the policy areas that the council committees will cover. We also have new names for a couple of the council committees. There's a memo in your agenda packet detailing what I'm about to announce right now, but there are a couple of changes I'll note. So first of all, the Human Services and Community Safety Committee. There will be no change to the name or membership to this council committee. Councilmembers Navarro and Garland will continue to serve. The only policy clarification, which is not a change, but just clarification that I want to announce, is that now affordable and workforce housing issues will also be covered by this committee. What was formerly the Workforce Readiness and Economic Vitality Committee will now be called the Workforce Readiness and Livable Communities Committee. This is actually a change in the new name from what was listed in the previous memo that was circulated as part of the agenda packets. I wanted to make sure to read it out loud. I'm appointing Councilmember Hodge to this committee, and Councilmember Keating will continue to serve on this committee. This committee will maintain jurisdiction over all education, youth development, and workforce-oriented policy issues, and they will retain oversight of a few legacy projects that the previous rev committee worked on over the past year. Lastly, what was formerly the Sustainability and Livable Communities Committee will now be called the Sustainability and Economic Vitality Committee. I'm appointing Councilmember Chin to this committee, and Vice Mayor Adams will also continue to serve on this committee. This committee will maintain jurisdiction over all sustainability policy, including related transportation issues, and will now also cover matters of economic development as well. So I just looked at my council colleagues. Are there any questions or feedback on these appointments or changes or anything I just said? All right. Thank you very much. All right, I appreciate it. Next up, item five B, Council Committees in Progress. Updates is needed. Item five B-1 is the Proposed Revised Work Plan for Human Services and Community Safety Council Committee. I look to Councilmembers Garland and Navarro. Do you have any updates? Councilmember Garland.
We do, as a matter of fact. So exciting. Thank you for bringing up our slides. So our council committee is going to stay the same with our title. And I'm going to go to the next slide. So this is our original plan. It was great that we worked with other staff members to be able to come up with really focused areas, our strategic directions for what we were going to do for each one of our items. And then we also set performance measures next to them so that we can really track what we are doing and making sure that we are really going to be making a difference in our committee and not just Joel and I spending time together one Friday a month. So this past year, we've had several hearings on a proposed ordinance to protect our community from flavored nicotine vaping products that are being marketed to our young people. That's one thing we did. We brought the Tempe PD and Fire Medical Rescue together to improve ways of water safety at the Tempe Town Lake. We also oversaw and had really great, not oversaw, but had great discussions about what the Family Advocacy Center was going to look like in supporting that initiative, and we are so excited that that is now open. It is within the city of Tempe's limits, and it is a huge, huge win for our vulnerable children and families in Tempe. So we are excited about all the work that was put into that. We also provided a forum for ongoing efforts to compassionately address the growing number of unhoused people in our communities. With our updated plan, which we can go to the next slide, our updated plan, there are some changes to that. One, we are going to continue to examine the interdepartmental solutions to park and downtown safety, particularly when it comes to water safety at Tempe Town Lake. We are going to support the Age Friendly Community Designation for Livability from AARP. So again, I'm really excited about that. And then, you know, we're looking at examining ways to expand availability of free and low-cost sports and recreation opportunities for childrens and teens in Tempe. We're also going to be discussing operations of the newly established Family Advocacy Center that's within the Tempe city limits, again, how that's working and how all of the partners are doing, working with that. And we do have ASUs taking a big role in that and partnering with us. We're looking forward to that. So Mayor, I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this tonight and present this to our council, and we would like consensus to be able to move forward on our work plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Navarro. Does the group have consensus, whatever, for them to continue moving forward with their work plan? All right. I'm good too, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Just a quick question, I guess, for Clarence, if I can. Clarence is like, "Man, I almost got through this whole meeting, and then you got a call on me." I was assuming there were, I don't know if there's any other updates here by any of the other committees, but since it's not on the agenda, I didn't know if I was allowed to ask the other council members, did they have any updates they'd like to share, but I see it said "updates is needed." So I wanted to ask you what's allowed and what isn't.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe if it's not on the agenda, we probably shouldn't have an update. So if there are no updates.
Just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Garland.
You know, I just want to do one point of clarification also. We took our plan to our Human Services and Community Safety Committee meeting, the last meeting, and walked through the plan with all the changes and the adjustments. So we did bring it to the public first before this.
Sounds good. No, thank you. Okay, perfect. And thank you, Clarence, as well. Everybody else okay? Or, okay, good. Want to make sure. We will make sure to have all of the new committees on the next work study just in case people do want to provide updates on their items. All right, the next item on the agenda is Future Agenda Items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session in accordance with the Open Meeting Law, which Clarence reminded me of, which I appreciate. There should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any council member like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? Councilmember Keating.
Mayor, I'd just like to hear an update from Tempe Police with regards to sex trafficking prevention. We have the Super Bowl coming, you know, we have that golf tournament everyone likes, whatever that's called. But yeah, we have a lot of events coming up here, and I just wanted to just give an update for prevention in the city of Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating, also showing off the same golf knowledge that I have, which is pretty much none. So.
Waste management.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams, for helping, for bailing both of us out on that one. Mr. City Manager, is that okay to add that to a future agenda?
Yeah, we'll get right on it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, I was just, I know that we're out of COVID, and we're doing things now where we have live music going on. So I do want to bring back basically the initiative we've been trying to get going with live music in the downtown area and the culture and what that means. I know that we've done some plans, and I would like to revisit the possibility of looking at live music, waiving some fees to encourage more restaurants to get involved, and then also to work on a little bit more of a venue within the downtown area. I know we have a great opportunity now with the new hotels and the new vibe that's going on here and the residents that are now living in downtown and the possibilities of closing some streets and maybe activating some Sunday, fun day activities, if you will, but also incorporating that live music with it. And I think there's a lot of information that we already have available. I think it's just really kind of just dusting some of that stuff off and maybe possibly looking at some alternatives that we can do to increase that vibe.
Sounds good. Mr. City Manager, all good with that one?
All good. I will reach out to Kate Borders at DTA and see if maybe we could incorporate this as well if there's an upcoming downtown update that she would bring. I think that's very much consistent with what she would already talk about, and we can add that as staff as well. If not, we can also do it as a standalone if it's not convenient in time.
And just some of the, I'm sorry, Mayor, and just some of the initiatives, just the live music, waiving the fees, things like that. Talk about those discussions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sounds good. Are any other council members, any other future agenda items? Councilmember Hodge.
I don't know how we can do this, but health, because of the flu season, everything out, can we have an update for our city on information for vaccines, flus, all that information that we can do to give account on how COVID is? Because I know it's another Sran coming. Anything we can do about health through the winter season?
Sounds good. We used to do those during the height of the pandemic as city manager updates during the regular council meetings. If we did it that way, we might be able to get it scheduled a little more quickly. Would that be okay?
That would be fine. I just would like it to be some information out there.
Okay, sounds good. We'll do it. One or the other, but we'll let you know when it comes.
Sounds good. Mr. City Manager, you totally read my mind, so, well done. All right, any other future agenda items that any council members would like to add? All right, seeing none. Next up, item number seven, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I don't have any announcements this evening. Mr. City Manager?
No announcements.
With that said, the next work study session is scheduled for November 10th, 2022, and we are adjourned at 5:34 PM.
Write it down, write it down.